Okay, I guess we're on air. This meeting of the Rolling Meadows City Council is hereby called to order. And this today is the committee of the whole meeting. And as everyone knows, it's an informal meeting. There is no pledge of allegiance. And I would like to just start by reminding everyone that we will go through two items tonight. Number one, extension 6B for JC Restoration 3200. And the second topic will be the Fire Station Relocation Project update. For the first one, my understanding is that they're actually looking for direction from the city council. Is that correct, Mr. Crumstock?
Yes, because we would have a resolution coming up at the next council meeting, but we do have the partners here to hear from the council and also for the council to hear from staff.
Okay, very good. And then the second item on the agenda is the Fire Station Relocation Project. My understanding is that this is an update by the fire chief. And my understanding also is that there is not a need to have any direction from the city council. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's setting the update. And then at the next city council during a closed session, there will be a continuation in that next part about land deck. But also, it is a full update where we sit right now with the vetting process and some of the additional information.
Okay, very good. And with those summaries in mind, let's start off with number one, and I'll defer right back to you, Mr. Crumstock, for introduction of extension 6B and where we want to go with this.
Thank you very much. Obviously, since 1990, the city has only given two extensions for 6Bs. We always tell people who are asking us for 6B, we tell them, you might get it once, but you really don't come back to the city for a second time. We do feel very comfortable about this discussion tonight for certain reasons. Obviously, we brought this to the Economic Development Committee earlier in this month, and we had the discussion about it. JC Restoration has been in the city for obviously numerous years. They did receive a 6B. They did extensive work in their building. They brought in new employees. And then during certain times, they have been just a great community business. They have been to almost every National Night Out, cooking the hot dogs, if you remember them there. They have been actually allowed us to use their trucks. They've allowed us to use their overall playing soccer field. When we had NATO actually in here, we've been allowed to do some training in there. Warner Cruz, who's sitting behind me, actually used to be on the Economic Development Committee for the city of Rolling Meadows. And obviously, when they were coming back to us with this discussion, their new owners of the land, Gramercy, we had the discussion about the extension of a squib. And unanimously, for the people who were actually at the Economic Development Committee meeting, it was approval for the extension for the 6B, but also with the understanding that the land for Squib Road to be extended would actually be part of this. And that's where the real value to the city is, the extension of Squib to the Ring Road, which is ours. So between Apollo and Ring Road, those are both city roads in allowing the squib. We do look at it as beneficial because, again, for JC Restoration and any of those properties in there, squib would be beneficial. But we also look at it, the city's not extending any additional money out there. It is putting the city obviously a few years out, but it is a resolution that you would see that would allow them to ask for the extension from Cook County. So with that, we do have some folks here from Gramercy, from JC Restoration, if you have any questions. But again, staff feels very comfortable that we'll be bringing back a resolution that talks about an extension of a 6B for a good business partner, but also for the city to receive what we need to extend Squib Road to, from obviously Apollo to Ring Road, and obviously make that a connector road for what we do in there. So that's my really brief intro. Obviously, as I said before, there are members here, if you would like to ask them any questions, but they really are a good business in the city. They've been very beneficial. They participate with us. And it's another reason why we feel comfortable allowing the 6B, because there is a quid pro quo.
Very good, Mr. Crumstock. On that note, too, in the readings that were sent out, there was a lot of information that was shared with the council, so there shouldn't be too many questions. But there are a couple of members of the council here that are also on the Economic Development Committee, so with their move forward on this proposal, are there any other clarification questions we have for Barry or anybody else on this issue? Anyone who would like to ask? Mr. DeSantis?
I have no clarification issues. I sit on the Economic Development Council, and they explained it, Mr. Cruz explained it in really detail, enough detail that the Economic Development Committee unanimously approved moving it forward. So I won't speak for Laura, but everybody pretty much said it was about.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments from anyone about this? Mr. Cannon?
Just a real brief thing. My interaction with this company has been nothing but outstanding. I guess if we had more corporate citizens like them, we'd be at a better place than we are already. But they've been nothing but generous to our city with the things they've done in support of both public works operations and also the National Night Out. They've been incredible. So from that standpoint, they're wonderful. I just want to make that comment. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments from anyone? Mr. Judd?
Thanks, sir. Just for clarification, so we offered the 6B in 2008, which means it goes till 2018, correct? And then there's two more years that it's a reduced rate. So is this extension pursuant to 2018, or does it start in 2016, and it's 10 years from now? What's...
Go ahead.
Well, I actually want to introduce Patrick, and I'll have him introduce himself for the minutes. But Patrick can go over that. That's one thing that we did through the EDC, talking about the extension, the 10-2, and then what we do after that.
Hi, my name is Patrick Kilmer. I am here for JC Restoration. You probably guys have noticed me before I've been in front of you before. So the 6B started in 2009, and 6Bs last 10 years, and then there's a two-years-old wind down. So in 2018, that would be the 10th year of the 6B. And then in 2019, if nothing happens, it'd be at 15% assessment level. And then 2020 would be at a 20% assessment level. So what we were doing, and we confirmed this is okay with the assessment's office, is to get a resolution now, hold on to it, and then in 2018, when it's eligible for renewal, file it, so that in 2019, that would be the first year of the new 6B.
So you would have 10 by 10 by 2 instead of 10-2, 10-2.
I guess that leads me just to trying to understand, why would we do it now? Why don't we wait until '18 and let whoever's on the council at that point in time make that decision? What's the purpose of doing it at this point in time?
We felt that it was appropriate to bring it at this point in time because of Squib Drive that we're trying to get done now. And we decided that if we got the discussion on the table, we also got the road built, it's beneficial for the city, it's beneficial for us. And then this way, they know what they have in the resolution. We have the street done, and we felt comfortable moving ahead with this at this point in time.
Okay. And what's the proxim... Do we have any kind of idea of the value of that parcel that they're going to... Are they giving it to us, or just conveying it to the city, or just easement? Or what exactly is the term that they're giving it to us? So what use do we have of it, per se?
It's actually a dedication. That's why there's a mail ire that talks about the easement and everything. So it would really turn into city of Rolling Meadows property. And I know your next question is going to be, what's the rough value of what we're getting in that green space for Squib? It's estimated, and again, it's just an estimate, over $300,000.
Okay, nothing else right now. Thank you.
Any other discussion points? And thank you again. So if there's... Is there any other discussion then on this topic at all? At this point? No? Would it be worthwhile at this point to...
Just the straw vote, just so we know. But our plan is to bring it back for the January 10 city council meeting for the resolution.
Okay. Why don't we then do a straw vote, and we'll do that by show of hands then?
Yes, please.
And for those of us that are for the extension 6B for JC Restoration, let's raise your That's six votes yes, one vote no?
Not committed at this point.
Not committed? Okay.
That would be number one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the second item, the Fire Station Relocation Project update. Chief Scott will hand the floor of the microphone and the podium over to you.
Thank you. Season's greetings, everybody. We have with us tonight Terry Boer from RC Wegman and David Patton from Healy Bender. They're the consultant group that we've been working with. As you may recall, and the purpose tonight, as you stated, is to give a summary of what we've been doing over the last few months and just a preview of what our next steps are in this project. As you recall, we signed, the city signed a contract with RC Wegman in September. And from that point forward, we've been working with them. Based on their recommendation, we established an internal city of Rolling Meadows steering committee made up of selected staff members from the fire department and other departments in the city. And we've been meeting with RC Wegman, Healy Bender Group on a regular basis, in no particular order, working on a few things. We started with evaluating our current space needs and some of our future needs for fire stations. You know, we looked at our square footage issues and some of the things that, you know, we definitely need in a fire station that we have now in our fire stations, and some desires and wants we might have in the future also. We evaluated those current and future needs, again, with their consultation on some of the best practices and some of their help in helping us vetting that process and some of those, that criteria in a fire station. We applied those needs then to some very, very preliminary conceptual designs for fire stations. And at that point, we then toured, oh, a half a dozen or so, four or five of fire station projects in the area that the Healy Bender, RC Wegman Group had put together over the years to kind of really get a feel for what our options are and how the things on paper looked in real life. We also did a preliminary evaluation of probably around 10 or 12 sites within the city of Roy Meadows. We narrowed that list down, I think that you're aware of. And then we established, again, with our steering committee, the internal staff members with their assistance, we established preliminary criteria selection process, or some preliminary criteria for selecting a fire station location, all with the design to just vet this process that we've been talking about for some time now and to make sure, again, from a third-person standpoint, that, you know, we're on the right track and we seem to be doing this the right way. At that point, then, towards the end of November, we invited select community stakeholders to help us further vet this project. We met for about an hour on December 5th, asked them to look at the criteria that we had put together internally with the help of our consultants. They confirmed that criteria. We asked them if they had other thoughts. And with, I think it was 24 criteria, we wound up utilizing. We had them rate that criteria, basically to give those a weighted level of importance. And I'd like to invite, for about 10 minutes, David Patton from Healy Bender, the architecture group that's working with us, to kind of just give you a brief summary of that criteria selection process. And then we'll talk about, you know, what our next steps are in this project.
We put together a short PowerPoint, and I think each of you have a copy of that with you this evening. But basically, just to kind of reiterate the goals that we were looking at on the site selection process, we wanted to make sure that it was an objective process, that it was open and transparent, and it involved key stakeholders within the community to get a broad agreement on the approach moving forward. We wanted to make sure that we prioritize the site selection criteria appropriately and with the ultimate goal of selecting the best sites for the new fire stations. So the first step that we did was basically involve the stakeholders and asked the question, which site selection criteria should the city of Rolling Meadows consider when selecting sites for new fire station facilities? And we also wanted to know the weighted importance of each one of those site selection criteria. What we did is we developed a process where we, as Chief mentioned, we presented 24 different criteria that would be considered for a site selection process. And then we asked the stakeholder committee, which was the steering committee plus additional community members, to join us. And we asked them to go through a voting process. Each member of the, each stakeholder got six dots, and they were numbered 1 to 6. And they, we laid out the 24 criteria sheets throughout the room, and we asked them to go through and vote, with number 6 being their highest importance criteria item, and 5 being the next, and all the way down to 1. And obviously, there were several criteria that they couldn't vote on because they only had six votes. But as a group, then we collected the results of all that, and basically, the total that each one of these criteria received became the weighted value. And here is essentially the results. With 77 votes, total votes, the location to minimize response time was the highest vote getter, followed closely by proximity to high call areas. Basically, there were four kind of top-tier vote getters that the stakeholder committee determined that evening on December 5th. There was kind of a second tier where you'll see kind of 20 through, got 20 votes through 12 votes. And then there was kind of a lower tier where there was, I think, seven or eight items that got, you know, there was one item that got one vote. But it was still considered as part of the criteria that we should look at. There were several criteria that received no votes. And those items, when we go through a grading process for each of the sites, we wouldn't go through the effort of grading those criteria because a weighted score times zero is still zero. So the next step that we did is actually today, we met with the steering committee again, and we actually scored each of the sites that are currently under consideration using the criteria that the steering committee or the stakeholder committee had developed with that criteria. And what we will be doing is generating the results of that process and coming back to the council in January with the results of that process to indicate kind of where the different sites turned out on a scoring level. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And so then, just to summarize and add one important factor, you know, the one factor we didn't ask the community stakeholders to look at was cost, because obviously, we know that's a big factor, and we obviously know that that's, you know, your factor. You know, that's the decision that, you know, we're going to have to make. So the next step, then moving forward, will be we look to go in a closed session on January 10th to talk about land acquisition and take this criteria and have you guys look at it and give us the authorization to move forward from there.
Very good. I know there's been a lot of time and effort gone into this, and you've used a very objective process to define what exactly we want to use for site selection. And of course, it's going to get down to cost one way or the other. You've already mentioned that. So are there any questions or any discussion concerning this?
I have a couple of comments that will come in here. First off, when you first came in, and we did the background, I mean, you're an outstanding company for the things that you have done with surrounding cities. And I supported having you come in so that we could get an objective look at this. But I know I've been in the minority from the beginning in that I would rather keep 15 down there, and I think the cost for this is too high. So one thing I have learned, being on this council, is to signal early that I won't be supporting going forward with this at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion, any other questions? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott, I was wondering if you could give me an insight as to when we will be going to the bond market? The bonds are getting more expensive, and I was told in open session that it will take us somewhere between four and six months to get the bonds done. And then we have 18 months to use them. So I guess if we're not going to go to market as quickly as possible, I guess I'd like to know some reasons why we wouldn't be if we're not going there. Thanks.
I can actually deal with that. Obviously, we're not ready to go to bond at this point in time because we don't know, we don't have plans, we don't have designs, we don't know which location we are potentially going to be moving to stations to. But those discussions we would be having in 2017. And the other part of that is obviously through certain aldermen, we've had already some of those discussions. If we do go out to a bond, we would potentially be looking at a full bond for some other construction items, some other infrastructure items, to make it not just one item only, because we still have some infrastructure from the Baxter-Woodman study that will be actually reviewed by the capital improvement, which we've actually talked about, so sewer and water. And then we actually have talked about some street items, too. But again, once you have that money, you really have to use a majority of it within that year. But at the same point in time, we do have another discussion once we have that ballpark, because we do know, if you're really looking at the Baxter-Woodman study, they do have a number in there for how much we would have, but those projects are not ready. So if we get ready to do that, we'd have to really look at what's being geared up. And we have to make sure that if we are going to the bond, what kind of bond are we going to go to that has numerous calls, is an open return? Are we actually having only a definitive times that we could pay off certain points? So there's more discussions that really need. So your answer is in 2017, we will have that discussion, but we need to have more of the pieces ready before we actually just say we're going out to bond, because bond council will ask us specifically where certain projects are, where your designs, where your pieces, and we do not know any of those pieces.
So you just gave yourself kind of a broad brush there, saying sometime in 2017. To me, if we don't get this done in the next couple of months, that's unacceptable from my standpoint. I can see no reason at this point. We've spent, the fire department staff has spent years putting this thing together. They seem to be on board with what needs to be done. I assume the gentlemen we've hired as contractors know what they're doing, because they've had many projects. I just don't understand why we wouldn't want to go to get bond money as quickly as possible to save the citizens' money going forward. We know this is going to be an expensive project, and if we decide we want to do other stuff, I can accept that to a certain extent. But I can't see any reason why we shouldn't have bonds out to market by March at the latest.
And part of that is even when we get ready to go out, even the bond council or anybody else is picking that up, is going to look for certain things and commitments, and we do not have those commitments ready, because we would not have a plan to show them, here's where we're moving stuff, here's why we're doing here, the plans that we actually have for two new stations. Is it a two-bay? Is it a three-bay? Some of those pieces, yes, they might be ready when we're getting ready. But at the same point in time, S&amp;P might be asking us, okay, you just finished your audit of 2016. We would like to see a clean audit, which means that would not be ready until June. But some of those pieces, again, they allow us to trickle some of those in March or April. But again, we look at all those different definitive prices, and we also look at our bond council to help us with some of those pieces. But again, once you have that money, that clock starts very quickly, that quicker than if you don't have projects, you just can't be putting that in. And that's also one of those things, when we had the money last time, that you have to broad-brush those infrastructure, because if you just say that's for one thing, and you can't finish that thing, then you're in arbitrage. And then we have a bigger problem for the city of Rolling Meadows, and that's something that no municipality really wants to put us into.
In light, I can appreciate your comments. One could read into your comments that you think that we might not be done with this project by the end of 2018. And if that's a possibility, that's crazy, because there's no reason for it to stretch out that long.
Yeah, I would hope not, because again, how the vetting has worked out at this point in time, then when we have the discussion in January 10th at the regarding property, hopefully that will vet out a little bit more that we needed to do. But 2017 will be a lot of discussions, and I know that our Wegman has their own schedule. I know that, Scott, for some of us who have been talking fire stations for 10 years, we've had numerous plans and numerous ideas on different things. So again, we would want to do this, and I know that originally, when we were talking about building fire stations, you know, that's a nine-month-to-a-year construction, depending on what we actually build.
And again, I appreciate all those comments. I can't see any reason at this point why we shouldn't be able to have a shovel in the ground by the end of summer.
I think we just heard why. We may not.
Okay.
We've got a lot of discussions to take place. I agree with you, we want to move it forward. So it's based on what this council wants to do. So the first action is January 10th at the closed session.
Okay.
As soon as we can decide something. I agree with you, Mike, we need to move the project forward. But I don't want to be the one to threaten saying, I can't see why we don't have a shovel in the ground by the end of summer.
I'm not threatening anybody, John. It's just a matter of we've been talking about this for so long.
I think we have to, it's up to the council to move it along as quickly as we want to.
Okay. Let me kind of step in here just to calm or slow it down or calm it down, or whatever words you like to use. Let's kind of bring it back to the subject that we're here to talk about. And the subject here we're talking about is the process that Scott and his team and the ad hoc group went through. And are there any other discussion concerning that? And I don't think there is. And I don't think there is. Mr. John?
Not that specific, per se, issue, but just one of the things that I know has frustrated me through the whole process of working with government in general is the speed. That nothing ever gets done in any kind of private sector reasonable speed time. So I think that's kind of what Mr. Cannon is alluding to. I understand, you know, what Mr. DeSantis is saying as well and what Barry. But can we, is there a way to get some kind of drop-dead dates so we can start, so we know that, you know, if we're going to make a decision January 10, we make that decision and we go?
For the comment tonight, we're here to talk about just the relocation portion of it. And we can talk about that at another time, okay?
But that's, I mean, it's all one into the whole thing.
Right. We can talk about that at another time.
Okay, then help me with what we're actually discussing tonight.
We're here to talk about the process that Scott just gave us with respect to summarizing what work he's done over the past couple of months.
And nothing about what's going to happen in the future?
No. The intention was not to vote on anything, not to do any straw votes, but just for information gathering from Scott.
Okay.
That was the intention. Okay, with that in mind, any other discussion concerning this relocation? No?
Can I make a motion to adjourn? Are we at that there yet?
We're at that point. And if there's no objections, then the meeting can be adjourned right now. Thank you all.